I want to welcome everybody here tonight in the audience. It's nice to see some people come out and take in a council meeting. And thanks for the staff, they're all here tonight. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. Is there a closed-meeting report? No closed-meeting report tonight. Any conflict of interest amongst council members here tonight? Seeing none, we'll go to the adoption of the published agenda.
That the published agenda for the March 18th regular council meeting be adopted as presented or amended. And through you, Mr. Chair, I do have one amendment to speak to. That would be item 8.4 on the agenda. The third recommendation under that report, item 8.4, the third recommendation should read that council direct administration to review and report back on the feasibility, subject to budget constraints, of retaining a marketing planning consultant to undertake a local comprehensive review on the adequacy and sufficiency of our residential unemployment land allocations within this planning period to 2031, to determine whether or not the reallocation of primary settlement area lands for residential unemployment land uses is warranted, and where new mid or higher density residential development should be prioritized by location. And that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Can I have a motion, please, to adopt? Councilor Bowman, secondor, Deputy Mayor Malash, all in favor? It's carried.
Adoption of minutes. Item 5.1, that the minutes of the regular council meeting held March 4th be adopted as circulated.
Any questions? Can I have a mover? Councilor Bjorkman and Councilor Van Endel, all in favor? It's carried.
5.2, that the minutes of the special council meeting held March 4th, 2019, be adopted as circulated.
Have a mover? Secondor? Secondor, Deputy Mayor Malash and Councilor Van Endel. Any questions on this one? All in favor? It's carried.
5.3, that the minutes of the special council meeting held February 26, 2019, be adopted as circulated.
Mover, please? Councilor Bjorkman and Councilor Verbeek, any questions on this one? All in favor? It's carried.
And 5.4, that the minutes of the special council meeting of February 25, 2019, be adopted as circulated.
Have a mover, please? Councilor Bowman and Councilor Van Endel, any questions on this one? All in favor? It's carried. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair, under reports, item 8 of the agenda, 8.1 is Legal and Legislative Services Report 2019-10, re Local Boards' Committees', Procedures and Best Practices Manual, that said report, providing council with an updated and amended copy of the Procedures and Best Practices document, be received and approved.
Can I have a mover, receive? Councilor Bondi, secondor, Councilor Bowman, any questions on this? All in favor? It's carried.
8.2 is Building Report 2019-02, that said report, providing council with an update on building activity within the town of Essex for the month of February 2019, be received.
Have a mover, please? Councilor Bjorkman, secondor, Councilor Van Endel, any questions on this one? All in favor? It's carried. Thank you.
8.3 is Planning Report 2019-11, re Harold Junior School rezoning application, and this is together with Bylaw 1796, being a bylaw to amend the Comprehensive Zoning Bylaw 1037, and 1797, being a bylaw to provide that part lock controls shall not apply to certain lands within registered Plan 1236, for receipt, and that council approve the rezoning of the noted lands, and accordingly, that Bylaw 1796 be provisionally passed this evening, and that Bylaw 1797, being a bylaw to provide that part lock controls shall not apply to those lands identified, be received three readings this evening, March 18th.
Can I have a mover to receive it? Councilor Bowman and Councilor Verbeek, any questions? Deputy Mayor Malash.
Thank you, through your worship, to probably to Mr. Watson. I'm looking at the drawing with the draft, parkland still in the middle, and I'm just wondering, when we pass this tonight, this doesn't settle any of that issue of whether we take ownership or whether we don't take ownership?
Through, Mr. Mayor, we've had subsequent meetings with the proponents, and the parkland has been eliminated. The other options are being explored as far as stormwater management is concerned. The property will be put into a holding residential zone, which means the hold will stay until there is a signed and executed development agreement, and that will be part of the review package.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you, your worship.
And I want to thank the opponents that are here tonight, and we really appreciate your development. Councilor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think there may be a typo on the report where it says "The street trees on Victor", and it may be Arthur, I'm not sure, I don't know. We've had a lot of development going on there, but anyways, that's not my question. I just want to bring forward the concerns again in the open meeting, that some of the residents, their only worry, they're very excited that this is happening, their only worry is abatement of the asbestos. You know, when that comes forward, they're concerned, there's a couple people that have home daycares and young children around there, so that's one of the concerns. A concern that I have as a councillor, through you, Mr. Mayor, perhaps to our planner, Jeff Watson, or a policy planner, is, is the waiving of development fees, which expires this August, is that enough to get this development started? And does that put this development at risk? Our development fees, by law, in Harrow expires this August, so it's kind of an elephant in the room. I want to get ahead of it, and make sure that we can either get the shovels in the ground and the permits drawn before then, or this council has to have a discussion about extending that or not extending that. And I do know we are waiting for that meeting on development fees, but I still think, you know, there is a lot of cost to developing this junior school, and I do believe the people in Harrow really want to see this developed, so I don't want any hiccups.
Thank you, councillor, I agree with you, and this is something I think will be addressed anyways. I just can't see people coming forward and going to develop, and we have another one too, is Delabana. Okay, we have some developers there, and I'm sure we can work through that. I don't think, I'm not going to speak for the whole council, but I don't think we're going to take away development fees when they've already put an application in to develop in Wardford. So that's my take, but it's up to council. If, who could answer, somebody on administration, how about you, Chris? Could you comment on that, or no?
Through your worship, in terms of development charges, we're doing our development charge study this year as well, which will encompass the entire municipality. So I think how it affects the development is not up to us, right? It depends on the proponent. The development charge study will look at development charges throughout the municipality, whether they change, whether they're waived, what we're going to do with them. So I think my recommendation to council is go through that development charge study process, and see how that pans out for you. That has to be done by the end of August as well, so that timing fits with the expiration of the Harrow lapse.
Okay, thank you, Chris. And by the way, I'm sorry, Chris, I didn't introduce you as our new CAO, he started tonight. I forgot to introduce him, so, sorry about that, Chris. Yeah. So on the motion, all in favor of the motion? It's carried. Thank you.
8.4, Planning Report 2019-12, that said report be received, and that the planning department give public notice for an official plan amendment and zoning change, and that council direct administration to review and report back on the feasibility of retaining a marketing planning consultant for the stated purposes noted in said report.
Have a mover? Or, yeah, a mover and a secondor, and then I'll ask for a question. Mover, Chris Van Endel, or Councilor Van Endel, and Councilor Bondi, questions? Councillor?
I have a couple of questions of administration. First of all, how much will this report cost? And I know the immediate answer is, we don't know, but is it going to be more than $10,000? Or the $25,000, more than $50,000? And I'd like to know how long this study is going to take? And I have some follow-up questions, too.
Jeff, if you can answer that?
Through, Mr. Mayor, certainly more than $10,000, probably in the range of about $25,000. It probably would depend on who you hired as well, because, for example, Watson and Associates, they are doing the development charges review, they know the area, they probably have a better idea of what situation is down here, but, you know, for a call for proposals, it would likely be in the $25,000 range.
Go ahead, councillor.
And how long do you expect it?
From a timing point of view, I don't think it would take that long. It's a question of looking at the amount of land we have for residential and employment lands, employment lands or commercial industrial. They would be looking at the distribution of those lands and the suitability of those lands, so they'd have to look at the sheer amount of land, they'd have to look at the servicing that's available, they'd have to look at traditional market trends in residential and employment. So those are not that complicated for someone who's basically, you know, involved in this on a regular basis.
Through the chair, do we know of any developments that this report might hold up, that are waiting in the wings, there are people that are interested, that this might irritate?
Through, Mr. Mayor, yes, we had conversations, that's what initiated the original review in the first place. What happened was, though, that we met with the county planners, they're the approval authority, and we were advised that, in their opinion, we're overzoned for residential, so what's the point of pushing for more multiple residential? Our position, of course, is that it's all very nice to have residential zoning, but you have to have the proper services, you have to have the proper location to make these things viable. So what their requirement was, or request is, that we do what's called a local comprehensive review, which is exactly what the consultant would be doing, to look at allocation, distribution of these lands, and their suitability. We had a proponent on the Essex Motel, and that's why we split that off from the overall review, and they have at least tentatively agreed that they would support an official plan amendment to accommodate the Essex Motel to affordable residential. We've also had other inquiries as well, but we've had no formal submissions at this point, other than the Essex Motel.
Chair, I'm just concerned that we don't really need this study. I mean, I get complaints, I've heard complaints for years from residents about us hiring too many, well, just having too many studies commissioned. On the one hand, I'm in favor of those because they can often save taxpayers money by contracting out, but sometimes they're superfluous and redundant. This one seems to be, I mean, Mr. Watson's our expert on this, and he's already explained to us that we need this multiple residential zonings, and I think we're unanimous in agreeing on this. Am I clear in thinking that the county is making us spend this money and waste this time and potentially scare off some development for this study?
Through, Mr. Mayor, no, technically, they're correct. It's really a provincial mandate, and I actually agree with them. It's been 10 years since we did our official plan, and we've kept it up to date as far as provincial requirements and mandates are concerned, but we've never really looked at the distribution of land uses and how well we've reflected, you know, tomorrow's needs and trends. But I'm not saying it's required today. If you put it in the 2020 budget, I think that would be fine.
Chris?
Through your worship, Councilor Van Endel, and that's why the amendment to the agenda was that that one be changed from retaining to investigate and come back to council with some budgetary numbers and some timelines. So just for you to tell us to investigate it, look into it, get some more detail on it, knowing what you know through this report, and then we'll come back with that, and I'm guessing, as Mr. Watson noted, we're probably going to be pushing into, well, we'll have a new director by then, and then 2020 budget.
Well, thank you, but I still have the feeling that we already know the subject well enough, but it's got to be done, okay? Thanks.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Bjorkman.
Thank you, through your worship. That's one of the things, as we're going through this exercise, that I've learned to be a little bit frustrated with, but this is a county mandate to us, and unfortunately, we don't have jurisdiction over our own residential areas and commercial areas, so this is something that we've got to build a case, prove to the county, we really do need this development, and we actually have developers that want to do this. So that's part of the, we have to look at that investment of, okay, we're going to have to do a study, because they won't take our word for it, that this is something we need, is, does the study pay off? And I guess that's the balancing act, and asking administration to go back to the drawing board, as far as just looking at it, let's look at the cost, what's the benefit to us? And then we take that investment and say, is this investment going to pay us? And if it is, then we go ahead and do it. But unfortunately, this is something that's mandated outside of our hands, and if we don't have this, they won't say, okay, you can go ahead and change your zoning. So it's that catch-22, there's only one taxpayer, they're paying the taxes of the county, they're paying the taxes to us, but sometimes this is the investment we have to make to get these developments.
Thank you, councillor. I'm just as frustrated as I think some of the councillors here, right? Because in the south end, that one piece there, Jeff, I'm talking about, it only makes sense that it's residential there, but now we have to go back and tell this person that he's on hold for a while, so, yeah, it's frustrating. Any other questions on this one? Okay, all in favor? It's carried. Thank you.
8.5, Corporate Services 2019-04, Report under Section 284 of the Municipal Act, Statement of Remuneration and Expenses Paid 2018, Said Report for Receipt This Evening.
Have a motion? Councilor Van Endel and Councilor Bjorkman, any questions? All in favor? It's carried.
8.6, Community Services 2019-009, Re 2019 Communities in Bloom Legacy Tree Program, Said Report for Receipt This Evening.
Have a mover, Deputy Mayor Malash and Councilor Verbeek, any questions on this? All in favor? It's carried.
8.7, Economic Development 2019-01, Re Essex Tourism Development Fund, That Said Report Be Received and Supported.
Mover, please? Councilor Verbeek and secondor, Deputy Mayor Malash, any questions? Councillor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for bringing this forward. I think it's good to have this framework. I've missed out on the finance committee for a term now, heading into a second term, so I've avoided some of these issues. My one thing is, I personally, just for my own comments, I think the $1,000 threshold is low. I do for the amount of, hopefully, we get lots of organizations applying. My fear is that there's a lot of hoops to hop through, and that the $1,000 could be a little higher. That's just from what I've seen. I don't know. I haven't been on the finance committee, so I don't know, but, you know, and I also think of, it may be hard for people to prove the percentage of attendees from outside the community. That's kind of, could be subjective, like, it's really hard to prove. For example, in, I believe in my first term on council, I helped a local woman, Anne Marie Grant, do the Harrow Art Walk, and it was on the main street of Harrow. I think it was before both of your time here in the town. So we closed the road off, and blankets were put down, and goods were sold on the middle of the road. We ran two of them, she ran two of them. The first one was really successful because it was paired on the weekend of Explore the Shore, and it had lots of people there. The second one, not so much, because there was two done in the same summer. So, and it's hard to see who's out of town. I mean, I can kind of tell who's from Harrow and who's not from Harrow, but it is hard, like, are you checking them off? And also, I think of it this way, right? Like, a tourist, what is a tourist? Yes, I want, I know what a tourist is, but a tourist from outside our municipality is good, but also people spending money inside our municipality is good. For example, getting people from Essex Centre to Harrow, into Colchester, that's good, too, right? Like, we want them to come to Colchester and come to our restaurants, and I want to come here. So it's not, like, and if those groups or initiatives need help getting our people spending money, if people have money to spend that live in our municipality, I want to encourage them to spend money here, too. So to say completely that I just want to market outside, I want to market both, I want to market anybody that has luxury money to spend. So those are my comments, that the $1,000 seems a little restrictive, and I think there's a lot of hoops to jump through for that $1,000.
Thank you, councillor. I think maybe we could have the administration look at that, and I'll look into it, but anyways, we have a motion on the floor. Any other, councillor Bjorkman?
Thank you, your worship, to councillor Bondi's statements. I agree that we want to bring people into our community, but we want people in our community to engage it as well. And as simple as just having a couple of people at one point in the day, I don't know, I'm sure you've got plans already, to just do a survey of, you know, where you're from. Get out there, interact with the people, if they're coming to a booth, you know, a piece of paper down there, just check the box, we're from this town, that town, because it's a great way for us to see where people are coming from. So when we're spending our advertising dollars trying to bring people in, if we already know there's a community out there someplace that knows us, well, what a great place for us to focus our attention at getting people in. So I think there's a great tool in finding out where the people are coming from that are attending our festivals, and from what I'm reading, it doesn't say here that there has to be a certain percentage coming from outside of our area. It just says, what is the percentage of people come from outside your area? So I think that's still, that's a very good data point to collect, if we can, and there's a multitude of ways to do that. My question regarding it is, will this be directed the same way that we do at the beginning of the year, when we're handing out the other grants and special monies through the finance committee, or is this something that's going to be open through the year, that people can apply to as their events are coming up?
Thank you, councillor. Nelson, could you respond to that, please?
Through your worship, so I'm going to touch on three things here. The outside residents, or sorry, outside attendees, it's just you have to make an effort to attract outside attendees, or attract tourists to your events, whether that's through targeted marketing through your event, but keeping track of the attendees at your event as well, I think is very important, so we want to show that you're doing that as well, just so when you come to apply the next year after that, you can show that you had an increase in outside attendees. I think marketing the event locally is important as well, and I think some of the past events have done a good job of doing that, just we want to see how this money is going to be spent elevating your event. The second point on the $1,000 budget, so it's $1,000, if it's less than $35,000, $2,000 if it's over $35,000. Again, this is kind of a first-year revamp trial, we can look at that afterwards, after the first year, and see if, see the intake, see the uptake in the application, and see how well it was received by people that are applying for it, whether it was too much work to apply for the $1,000, or whether they want to see an increase in that potentially. So that's one thing we're going to look at after. And the third thing, it's an ongoing intake throughout the whole year. Applications will be, because there's so many events throughout the year, it'd be hard to do one intake or two intakes, it's throughout the year. We'll look over the application, provide some recommendations to council, to see what applications move forward and which ones don't, and then at that time, council will approve the events that get the funding.
Okay. Councillor Bowman?
Just a comment there as well, that information is really important to all the organizations that are, they're planning a festival or an event. In the past, the Canada South Festival Network has supplied some of those services to their membership of events, and they actually send a crew out to, over the weekend or over the event, to take those kind of numbers that you need, basically, where they're from, how much they're spending, how much is local, and a whole list of questions, so, and that is good feedback for those organizations, because how do you know where to focus your advertising, or whatever you're doing, if you don't know who your customer is? So it's so important that you have that feedback on what you're doing, and initially, you can do it fairly easily by, oh, just for example, a raffle on something, where it's free, people have to fill out a little card to register. I mean, it tells you all you want to know, where they're from, and those kind of things, what they're going to do. It's not, you know, a great accuracy, but at least it gives you some feedback to start with. And then there's a whole bunch of other organizations that do it on a professional basis as well, so it's so important to get it back to your organization, and know where you're going, especially the next year when you're planning your event. So that type of thing is great.
Thank you, councillor. Alex, did you have a comment on it?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, through the chair, we definitely don't want to make the process onerous. I know there are local nonprofits that are hosting organizations. The ministry, the tourism ministry in Ontario provides some tools for measuring and estimating tourism visitation, so I think it would be also a matter of marketing those tools, providing those tools and resources to the groups that are hosting the events, so we can help them basically find the tools that makes it easier for them to assess the tourists that are coming in.
Thank you. Any other questions? I just want to thank Nelson and yourself for promoting the town. You guys are doing a very, very good job promoting this. Thank you. All in favor of the motion? It's carried. Thank you.
Item 9, any reports from our youth member this evening?
No report for tonight, thank you.
Item 10, any updates from county council this evening?
None from county council this evening.
Item 11.1, that all of the correspondents listed in Agenda Item 11.1 be received, and where indicated, to further share with the community using suitable methods of communication.
It's great we're getting a partnership fund. Thank you. All in favor? It's carried.
11.2.1, Towne de Sauguin Shores, that the correspondents from the Towne de Sauguin Shores ask an Essex council to consider supporting their resolution, requesting that the governments move forward with accepting applications for funding under the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program, be received or received and supported, and if council chooses to so support, that the appropriate letters be sent to the federal and provincial governments, the MP, MPP, Parks and Rec Ontario, and the Towne de Sauguin Shores.
Deputy Mayor Malash is a mover, secondor?
Receive and support.
Yeah, receive, and, and councillor Bowman, any questions? All in favor? Thank you. It's carried.
11.2.2, that the youth council member application received from Cam and Susie be received, and that in accordance with Resolution R1903096, passed at the March 4th meeting, that council grant an exemption from the town's procedural bylaw, and that Cam and Susie be appointed as a Towne de Essex Youth Council Member for the term of 2019-2020.
Mover, councillor Verbeek, secondor, councillor Van Endel, it looks like somebody's going to be sitting beside you, that's great news. Thank you. All in favor? It's carried. Took a long time.
Item 12, that the committee meeting, sorry, committee meeting minutes listed in Agenda Item 12, together with any recommendations noted, be received, approved, and adopted as circulated.
Mover, receive it, adopt it. Councillor Verbeek and Deputy Mayor Malash, any questions? All in favor?
Item 15.1, the following notice of motion was originally presented at the March 4th meeting, and is being brought forward for consideration this evening. Moved by councillor Bondi, that council have a public discussion about the level of service they wish to see in the fire department when it comes to water and ice rescue, and that council further provide direction, subject to budget constraints, as to the level of training and equipment they wish the fire department to possess as it relates to water and ice rescue. As moved by councillor Bondi, would need a secondor, and assuming the motion carries, we also have PowerPoint presentation from our fire chief, Rick Arnell, this evening.
So we need, we do need a mover and a secondor. Councillor Bondi and Deputy Mayor Malash, so. And a vote, please? Can I vote on it? So we can, don't we have to have a vote for the, yes, but, yeah, we'll receive it separately. Okay, Doug, did you have a comment?
Just for your worship, just so council's aware, with council
Just for your worship, just so council's aware, with councillor Bondi bringing the motion forward and its content, I thought it was important that the fire department prepare the presentation which may answer some of your questions, kind of where we sit now, and where we may go. So that was the purpose, and the chief and deputy chief put together a very comprehensive presentation on that, so.
Thank you, Doug. You can go ahead, chief, on your.
Through your worship, tonight Deputy Fire Chief Malasch and myself are going to tag-team this PowerPoint presentation. And what we're looking at doing is kind of showing you where we are, where we were, where we are today, and how we're moving forward with our ice-water rescue team. So as we know, we went through, we had our orientation with council, and we talked about the ENR bylaw. The ENR bylaw, as you can see in the two highlighted red, says water rescue, we do shore-based rescue plus basic water entry. And ice-water rescue, we do shore-based rescue. Currently, that's the level of service through our ENR bylaw that mayor and council has set for the municipality. The next slide is also within the ENR bylaw, and what it shows is limited in agreement services. So these are services that we have agreements with other municipalities to come and help us in the event of emergency. And again, we've highlighted in red, water rescue entry, boat. The town of Kingsville will come to our aid if we have an issue. And ice-water rescue, they're advanced-trained, and they will come, Kingsville, the town of Kingsville will come and help us as well. So just a little background info, and the Canadian Coast Guard and the Ontario Provincial Police are the two authorities having jurisdiction for Lake Erie. Now, that's right from the shoreline out to the center line, the international border. So that's all coordinated through JRCC, which is the Joint Rescue Coordination out of Trenton. That's the entity that takes care of all of Lake Erie. So currently, the OPP take direction from JR, the OPP don't even have the jurisdiction, they take direction from JRCC. OPP and Canada Coast Guard provide air support for any issue we have out on the, on the lake, as well as marine, search and rescue, and also underwater search and rescue. With all that in mind, the town of Essex, we still have lots to worry about in water. We have, you know, all our inland waterways that we want, that we're concerned about, right? We have ditches, creeks, ponds, rivers, all those entities, lagoons, that we're worried about, and that's what we're trying to provide a service for. So as we know, back in 2015, we came with a new ENR bylaw. At that point in time, we did shore-based rescue and council at the time, and I believe, your worship, you were part of that team that directed us into ensuring that we moved forward and did more than what we were scheduled to do. So we were directed by council in 2015 to identify the gaps in the service for our community. So what we'd done is we went together, we surveyed our three stations to manifest a 10-person team of individuals to provide response to any emergency calls regarding water, ice water. So what we did is we went out and bought some, some basic equipment to get this team rolling. We've, we've since run into some, and as you see the asterisk on training, we have run into some hiccups with provincial government. In 2014, there was a terrible accident where someone lost their life while training, doing ice-water training. And the province of Ontario, the fire college pulled the training and ceased it at that point in time. So we didn't have any clear direction on what training we should do, and what level we needed to train to. So we continued to get some basic entities together, we trained our personnel, and we bought some basic equipment, and we're looking at now enhancing that in our capital budget moving forward next year. And we'll talk about the budget more towards the end. So what we did is we sat down and we did a risk analysis. So Lake Erie goes from Cardinope 41 to 23, which is about 16 kilometers of shoreline, but that falls under the jurisdiction, as I said earlier, Coast Guard, Joint Rescue Coordination Centre, and they provide that service. Now, as we talk Coast Guard, the Guardian, which we know the Guardian is out in Colchester, works for the Coast Guard during auxiliary Coast Guard unit. So if there was an issue on the lake, the Coast Guard would call the Guardian to go out and respond to it, which they could respond to anywhere within that 16 kilometers and/or to the point, or wherever, right, wherever the Coast Guard would need them. So again, as I spoke earlier, the inland water is what we're really concerned about. We, the town of Essex, as well as the OPP, we got to make sure that creeks, ponds, streams, lagoons, those things that we can provide the services, something happens, in event, something happens in one of those. And then we have flooding. And the reason we have flooding, and Deputy Chief Malasch, as he goes through some of the training, said, or kind of explained fast-moving water and swift water, and why that, that entity falls even on land. So again, that falls under our jurisdiction as the town. So we went through, and from January of 2008 to December of 2018, we took all the 3,909 incidents we responded to. 14 of those were water-related incidents, which factors into less than half a percent of what we actually do in responding to incidents. Out of those 13 incidents, one incident, we had to actually get a boat. So we had Kingsville come and help us on that event.
Thank you. Just to carry on a little bit, before we carry on further into the training requirements, I just wanted to break this down and explain that water rescue operations fall into a specialized category when it comes to the fire department's operations. Day-to-day firefighting operations are covered under one standard, one set of guidelines, one set of training. Water rescue is broken down into a specialized type task discipline and requires additional training. As you can see in the, in the three different categories, it's, it's broken down into what I'm going to identify as three different levels, but then there's also specific disciplines based on the environmental conditions or the water conditions that are faced. The term ice-water rescue team is used as an overall perspective of what the team does, but understand that ice is completely separate level of training or condition that has to be trained to versus open water versus swift water. Swift water is identified as water that's moving faster than one knot, which is actually slower than most people walk. Ice water is also inclusive of open cold water, so anything that's 70 degrees or below requires a different level of training. When we look through these trainings, I just wanted to highlight that you're going to see in the different categories, shore-based rescue requires a specific level of training, which is awareness level or operations level. And then it breaks down further, if you're going to enter the water, as soon as you put a foot in the water or a hand in the water, requires technician level. So there's awareness level, operations level, technician level. Awareness level slash operations level will allow a personnel or a staff member to work from the shore or support a technician who's entering the water. And then over and above and beyond that is an additional level, which requires those basic levels, some advanced levels, and then that's motorized watercraft or powered watercraft levels. And that requires all of the levels plus boat operator levels. Go ahead. Along with those different levels and broken down over the training pieces, we obviously have some equipment requirements. And as we step through those different levels, we also see some different equipment requirements. So if we're going to provide shore-based rescue, for example, you'll see we have PFDs, we'll have to wear personal flotation devices, we need ropes and things to reach and/or assist people from shore. But as soon as we enter the water, there's a whole nother level of equipment requirements. We have to have thermal protection and water protection for contaminated or cold water, ropes, rigging equipment, and then obviously some type of a craft. It doesn't necessarily have to be a motorized or a powered watercraft, but a craft to allow the crew to safely work in the water and remove themselves. And then if we were to look beyond that into marine patrol or marine rescue, there would be all of that equipment plus powered watercraft. Training requirements, this again touches on the different levels, so that awareness and operations level versus technician level versus marine operator technician level. And then that is broken down further by different environmental conditions. And we'll look at that a little bit in the inland water section. But our shore-based, our awareness and operations level training is provided to every firefighter within our service. That is the awareness level and the operations support level for technicians. That is a basic requirement under basic firefighter training, and it has an annual requalification level of a couple of hours worth of training that allows them to support the technicians. Technician level training is a little, is quite a bit more in-depth, and especially when you break it down over the different environments. When you break it down on open water versus ice-water versus swift water, you can see that there's, there's some annual requirements. There's an initial swim test that's required of any technician that's going to be entering the water. Before they even participate in initial technician level training, they have to conduct an initial swim test, which will provide them with proficiencies in swimming to conduct those technician levels. And then the technician levels would be broken down further beyond that after the initial swim test. They would learn their disciplines and skill sets in ice-water, cold water, open water, and then swift-moving water. For marine operations, it would be the same level of training plus additional boat operation training. Okay? So kind of as a brief overall look, we look at the resources, this is just kind of a map of the overall area, highlighting some of the resources that would be available to the waterway looking over Lake Erie. I know it's a little bit hard to see up there on the screen with the black, and apologize. But we have directly down below Colchester, our Colchester Guardian logo there on the water. We have the OPP marine unit in their season, when their marine unit is on patrol. So we do have marine operators on land in patrol vehicles, but we also, throughout the open water boating season, have the OPP marine unit on Lake Erie and in our Detroit River waterways. We have the Canadian Coast Guard, the Canadian Coast Guard base, main base, other than the Guardian auxiliary vessel, is located in Amersburg. It's about a 24-kilometer trip around to what I'll call the central point or Colchester. They also utilize the resources of the US Coast Guard, being a bordering, bordering federal agency. They can call upon the US Coast Guard, and that is all, again, coordinated through the JRCC out in Trenton, being their jurisdiction. One other vessel that is commonly out on the waterway within our area is the Ministry of Natural Resources. It's also noted that any vessel that is in a waterway that is known or knows of a waterborne emergency, a water-based emergency, as a mariner is also required to respond to that emergency if they're within distance or know of it, and they can safely do so.
Just a quick question, Rick. The M&amp;R, their boat, is it stationed in a location in Amersburg or Leamington, or they trailer that boat and put it in?
I'm not 100% sure. I do believe it is a trailer boat. I know they do have a trailer boat, but I do know that they're in the water quite often and do.
I've seen them in the water several times, but I was just wondering if they're stationed in Amersburg. I know the OPP's in Amersburg, and they do have a boat in Leamington now, too. I'm aware of.
I believe, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the OPP exactly where their docking situation is, but I do know that they often use both docks, and they have several vessels.
Yeah. Thank you.
Just wanted to touch base as well and kind of highlight, for inland water, we have a significant amount of inland water. That can include ditches, ponds, lagoons, waterways, creeks, streams, rivers, and/or overland flooding in the event of flooding emergencies in areas that would normally not have water. Those can often become water emergencies or water-based emergency. And obviously, our resources are a little bit different for inland water. I'll use the Cedar Creek area, for example. If we responded to Cedar Creek, the resources that we would have available for Lake Erie are not going to be available for that body of water. The Coast Guard is not able to access that area like they would the lake. Touching base on an actual water rescue, on average, water rescue incidents require the following staffing levels. So it's important to note that if one person is going to be entering the water as a technician, the average is about three to four supporting staff members on land. We have to have rigging, rope, tender lines, and quite a few steps that are involved for every person that enters the water. So on average, when we say for a normal rescue of one to two persons, three to four technicians may enter the water, but we still have to have eight to 10 awareness or operation level supporting tender personnel on shore. And that is all staff. So all our staff have that level of training. And then obviously, one overall incident commander from the fire service that would direct that rescue operation. The above chart may be a bit difficult to see in the, in the lighting here, but this is kind of an overall perspective of the county fire services. We've polled the county fire services to find out whereabouts each department is at with their level of service, and also what services they provide or levels of service they provide. Column one is identified as shore-based or awareness operations level. And all departments within Windsor and Essex County provide shore-based awareness level training to all of their staff and are equipped to provide shore-based rescue. The next column, over the middle column, is water entry. Water entry level training is the number of staff that are trained or are being trained to enter the water as a technician level. And then the third column, or far right-hand column, is a column that identifies departments which have a marine vessel for waterboard, water-based rescue operations from boat. Stand corrected, on one of those vessels is Leamington. The two that are highlighted red, and the Leamington one is highlighted red, we thought that was a Coast Guard auxiliary. That was a mistake in color coding that. The LaSalle vessel is also another Coast Guard auxiliary vessel, which is identified and trained to that level. And they provide that they have some, some significant risk-based items within their municipality that they've identified, such as islands, marinas, inlets, and waterways that have allowed them the opportunity to become Coast Guard auxiliary. Based upon the, the risk analysis, based upon the level of training and the commitment from our staff, moving forward in 2015, and like chief had noted too, one of the struggles with this is the timing of how this happened, with a couple of deaths in relation to some, some training that had happened throughout the province of Ontario, and the Ontario Fire College and Ontario Fire Marshal's Office retracting the current training program for the province of Ontario. It left a lot of municipalities kind of in limbo, and especially municipalities that were in the process of establishing or starting or elevating their level of service, such as one of our case. Prior to 2015, we had shore-based only. We were looking for a training program, and if that training program's not available, we weren't able to offer that. And that has just now become available. We have a training program that allows us to fill that gap. And our recommendation is that we continue with shore-based water rescue for all staff, and a technician-based team of 10 that we have right now that is committed to that training, and the equipment within, within budget. And we also have the recommendation that powered watercraft, that advanced level operator level, at this point in time, be provided from Amersburg Fire Department and Kingsville Fire Department as identified in our establishing regulating bylaw.
Your worship, so to kind of pull some of that together, as Deputy Chief Malasch said, and you talk about the training, and we kind of got put on hold, all those municipalities that had established teams prior to were able to continue and continue the training that they were doing. But we were new in the business, and we didn't, we didn't have the availability to any of the new training syllabus to ensure that our people were being trained correctly. So now, where are we? We just finished up having two staff, our two full-time staff trained as trainer facilitators. That allowed us to purchase the training package that we can bring back to the 10-person team we have, and we're going to provide them with that training. So then they'll be doing their annual recertification, swim test recertification, as well as training that 10-person team to ice-water rescue. The next The next portion of this and the next step into this process is now we found a swift-water rescue course that we're going to send our two full-time staff again to be trained facilitators. They'll bring that back to our community and provide our staff with the training to meet the swift-water portion, and then we'll be able to meet it all. So right now, where we are is we're beginning our ice-water rescue training with our personnel. Yes, we have limited equipment, and that's what our budget is going to show, our capital budget is going to show we're moving forward on. So currently, we do meet the bylaw. We do do shore-based rescue. And, you know, do we do in-water rescue? Again, as you see, shore-based rescue, that entails a 75-foot throw rope. And if we could walk 100 meters into the lake and throw a 75-foot throw rope, then that's, you know, that's an extra distance we can go. But that's all we can only walk in. So what this is showing is what we're looking for, and coming up in our capital budget beginning 2020, we're looking for ice-water capital funding of $12,100 to get some more suits, some ropes, PPE. And you've seen that inflatable rescue raft that was in the picture of equipment. What we're looking at is buying the first one of those. We'll station it out at Station Three. And then two years down the road, when 2022, we're going to buy a second craft, which we'll station at Station One. So we'll have one at either end of the community that we can be deployed at any time and get that craft out to where we need. In the middle of 2021, we need another $4,200 to buy more suits and PPE to ensure our people... And the reason we're doing it over a three-year span, if we asked for all the money at once, all the suits would come due at once, and we'd have to replace everything all at once. So what we're trying to do is phase this in. So as you can see, in 2023, we're coming up to $4,500 of annual replacement costs that we can continue to refurbish the suits and equipment as needed and move down. And every 10 years, we would have to replace the floating rigs, so we'd have to replace those boats every 10 years. So with that in mind, every water rescue incident is a unique situation, and we don't really know what they are until we get there. And the environmental hazards, water entry, purpose of rescues are limited, right? So what we're basing our best knowledge and all our stats on is NFPA guidelines. We've now got a training syllabus that we can provide to our people, and we want to ensure that our waterways from border to border are covered, and we can take care of those issues. Now, you know, anything, our job would be to take care of everything above water, and anything below water, we have OPP, which have, you know, services that can be summoned to come in and assist for any issues that are below the water. That's our presentation, Your Worship.
Thank you, Chief and Deputy Chief. Any questions from council? Counselor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the Deputy Chief and the Chief for their time in making the presentation. It's really good to touch base on issues like this, right? It's in the budget meeting that we had, McGregor, about a month ago, I asked that question, you know, because of the incident, because of the recent incident that happened at the harbor where two people lost their lives. Do I think we could have saved them? No. But at the same time, it kind of opened my eyes. Anytime you see this little pink book, this little pink book has notes that I've made with outstanding issues. I'm getting a little long in the tooth, unfortunately, to be on council, so I have outstanding issues, and this is one. I remember having this discussion about, you know, the gap in service and going forward. And when that incident happened at the harbor, it kind of said, okay, let's look at this. What are we doing? And I do remember giving, it was foggy because there's only so much that I can retain in here. There's a lot going on. So I do remember giving direction. I do know that in 2016, there was a competency test, and there's been training, but there hasn't been requalification. So now I'm hearing the reasons why. Then I have my budget here, and so what I would like to see is when the next budget comes out, I'd actually like to see your capital projects in here so that I have peace of mind I know that they're in here. Because, and it does make sense, what you were saying is buy a couple, buy a couple, buy a couple year after year, because that seems to be what we do with everything in fire. You know, we're constantly buying a few replacement helmets, a few replacement pagers, a few replacement, you know, so I'd like to see that incorporated so that I have peace of mind. Currently, right now, I'd like to know, you know, how many Station Three firefighters are we going to train at this technician level? Because if, you know, we're entitled to lives as well. So, you know, Deputy Chief Malat may be gone away, and, you know, and I know that there's only a couple suits out there right now. So I want to make sure we always have that coverage. Because as a councilperson, I'm only one of eight. I understand that. But as a councilperson, I support this, and I support giving money to this to make sure that this is important for our residents. I also think, I don't know how we do it, I don't even know if it can be done, but we could look at skill sets in the neighborhood that have these skill sets. I don't know. I don't know if it's possible, but... So I just want to make sure I hit all my points. So we set the policy, we set the level of service. This is something that I feel is important. We live on Lake Erie. We're attracting new development. We're attracting tourists. We're attracting people that may not be familiar with our area. So the cost per firefighter, you know, heaven forbid, you know, I want to buy those suits, and I want to buy all that equipment, and then I want it to sit there and not ever get used. But we don't know, right? We can't... Every body that goes into the lake, you know, and I'm talking just shoreline, will need to be rescued or brought back at some point. They may not be alive, but we need to get them. You know, I feel for our firefighters over the past incident that happened where, you know, there could be a mom or a dad that drives into the harbor, and their children are in the backseat. And then if we don't have the proper training, they're sitting there looking at that car going down, and the bubbles coming up. I don't want that. That's on me. So now I can publicly say, I support this, and I support going forward. I'm really happy with the plan you brought forward, and it's really defendable, and it makes sense. So I'm glad that we got to touch base on this. As a counselor, it's hard to, we had some budget meetings, but we really didn't get to, like, add things in the budget. So we really didn't. As a council, like, we, because administration did a really good job. That's why. We had nothing to argue about, nothing to lobby about. They brought us a budget. We're like, this is great. Then I went home, and I thought, you know, that's something that I want to see in there so that I know it's in there. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Vanandol.
Through the chair, the incident we're referring to, wasn't that a suicide?
Pardon me? Go ahead.
The incident where, I mean, somebody went into the water. We keep calling it an incident. Wasn't it a suicide? I'm just worried that we seem to be going off half-cocked here. I mean, okay, if there was a suicide, that's terrible, it was a terrible thing. I don't think that means that we have to start committing our taxpayers to spending tens of thousands of hundreds of thousands of dollars. Over 10 years, we had one incident that required a boat, one. And we're surrounded by police departments and other government agencies that have boats. Amersburg has a boat, Kingsville has a boat, LaSalle, Leamington, because they have big marinas. The MNR has a boat, CBSA has a boat, RCMP and CSIS have boats. We have boats coming out of the Wazoo. We don't, I don't think we need to go overboard for some sort of aquatic disaster that I don't think is likely to happen. I think we're probably as well-trained and equipped as we need to be. Thank you.
Anybody else on council? I just want to ask the Chief one question. We do have aluminum boat, don't we, down at the harbor, available to us? Do we have aluminum boat or not?
Through your worship, at this point, no. None of our personnel are trained to be on a boat, so we can't really send people on a boat. What we do in event there's an incident, and we got confirmation on the call that there's somebody in the water, we make an initial call to Kingsville, and their boat is en route at the same time we're en route to the call. So we're getting Kingsville there as fast as we possibly can. And at this point, you know, what we're doing is to enhance what we have is we're going to be trained to the same level as Kingsville Fire. And what we may do is offer our people to be able to go help Kingsville, and if they were short people, to go help them, so that it keeps the cost down for everybody, and we still maintain a level of service that every municipality wants in the area, so...
Another question, Chief. What was the response time when that car went into the harbor there from Kingsville? Can you recall what the response time was there?
Through your worship, and there is guidelines out there that tell us how long we have to be in a rescue operation. Once an incident we respond to turns from rescue to recovery, we no longer have any jurisdiction that's OPP. So in the event of a rescue, depending on the temperature of the water, you have anywhere from 60 minutes to 90 minutes to get there and get the people out. That incident at the harbor that day, we were able to get the individuals out of the water in less than the 90 minutes. We were about, I think, 82 or 83 minutes, and we had them out of the water, so...
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Bjarkman.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you for the presentation. It was very good, very in-depth. I think one of the things we're not talking about or realizing, this is training for our firefighters to protect themselves. This is great training to send people out. We're going to now offer a level of service. But if I'm going to send a man out into a ditch that's overflowing, that's moving at 20 miles an hour, and he's never done this before, back up a little bit. We don't send our firefighters out to a fire in their cars to meet the truck, because we don't want two firefighters getting to the fire by themselves and standing there thinking, okay, I can't go in yet because I got to wait for the other two guys. It's important that they arrive as a unit, that they do their job, that they fight it together, because they put themselves in harm's way. So when you've got an issue like this, the right people get called, they go out to the situation, they've got the training, they've got the proper PPE, and they can protect themselves while they're trying to save or recover or whatever it is. So I think it's very important, when we look at the costs associated with this, there will be issues. There might not be many. But the time that they do go out and they are trained and they're protected properly, based on what we spend money on, and I see the numbers here, we're talking about under $10,000 a year on average, I'm all in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Doug, did you...
Your Worship, just going back to Counselor Vanandol and a few comments. We're not looking, the recommendation wasn't to go to the water powercraft. It was to stay at the Level Two, which is basically where we're at now. So just so council is aware, we're not looking at going to that third step, but using mutual aid.
Thank you. Any other questions? I can just say one thing. Unfortunately, there was nothing we could have did at Colchester with that event that happened out there. It was just, it was unfortunate. And when you hit cold water like that, it's very unfortunate. Four to five minutes, you're gone. Yeah.
Through your worship, just on a final thought is, again, we're trying to do a couple of things here, and we're trying to be mindful of spending, right, which is what you entrust us to do. That's one. And we're trying to be mindful of our employees, because, again, we have part-time employees that, you know, part-time volunteer firefighters. And to do this training, it's enhanced training that's over and above what we require in regular training. So, you know, we have to, we got to be able to have that work-life balance and ensure that the people that want to do this have the time to do it and provide the energy for it. So we're trying to be mindful of all those things and juggling all those balls, and I think this is the right way to go, and we thank council for your endorsement.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, for the presentation. Is there any other questions? Can I have a motion to receive that report? Counselor Bjarkman and Counselor Bondi, all in favor? It's carried. Thank you, gentlemen.
15.2, the following two notices of motion are for presentment only this evening with no discussion or consideration pursuant to the procedural bylaw until the April 1st regular council meeting. The first notice of motion is from Counselor Garan, that the town sign bylaw 1350 be amended to require commercial property owners to remove or conceal business branding from signs, windows, and doors within a reasonable period of time following the closure of a business. And the second notice of motion for consideration on April 1st is from Mayor Snively, that administration prepare report outlining processes and steps in a detailed plan to move forward with rezoning Colchester Center from residential to commercial. Item 16 on the agenda, any reports and announcements from council members.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just want to remind people that the Essex Center BIA is having their Excellence Awards banquet coming up. And until March 20th, which I think is two days away, I think that's on Wednesday, anybody can nominate a business. So if you go to the Essex BIA's Facebook page or their webpage, you can email in the business that you're in favor of. There's different categories there and why. But it's a great way to recognize the businesses in our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Verbeek.
Yes, I just have to steal this moment because Joanne Hayes, my mother, turns 81 today, and she watches these meetings and re-watches them. Happy birthday, my beautiful mother, Joanne.
Deputy Mayor Malasch.
Nothing this evening, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder to residents, January, February, March, you can get your dog tag for the regular price. It goes up April 1st, so if you haven't got your dog tag yet, head over to Town Hall and get it.
Counselor Vanandol.
Nothing this week, thanks.
Counselor Bowman.
Since Counselor Garan isn't here, I'd just like to thank the Essex 73s for a fantastic season. And I think our mera looked very nice in a Lakeshore Canadian sweater in the next few days. So anyway, congratulations to Lakeshore, and many thanks to our local 73s.
Thank you, and I have to agree with you, Counselors. They were just a little bit tougher than we were. And yes, I'll be probably wearing that jersey Wednesday night. I forced Aldo to wear ours, and I guess I'm going to have to bite the bullet and wear the Canadian one. But they, very, very good to the 73s. They had a good season, and congratulations to the Canadians. They played good hockey, so...
Item 17, bylaws. Bylaws for third and final reading, 1795 to confirm the proceedings from the March 4th regular council meeting.
Have a mover, Deputy Mayor Malasch and Counselor Bowman. Any questions? All in favor? It's carried.
And for two readings this evening, 1798 to confirm the proceedings of this March 18th, 2019 regular council meeting.
Mover, Counselor Verbeek and Counselor Bjarkman, all in favor? It's carried. Yeah, and could I have a motion to adjourn, please? Deputy Mayor Malasch and Counselor Vanandol, all in favor? Thank you very much. Thanks, council, and thanks for the input from administration. Thank you, and thanks for the people coming out tonight. Really appreciate it.